All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Terry, can you confirm that we are in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
And if you could please take a roll call.
Commissioner Norden.
Here.
Commissioner Zur.
Here.
Commissioner Becca.
Commissioner Clemens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Terry, sorry. Our first order of business tonight is to adjourn to closed session. I would hear a motion to adjourn to closed session under 19.851(c) to discuss superintendent contract finalizing.
So moved.
Terry, if you would please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Norden.
Yes, sorry.
Yes.
Commissioner Becca.
Commissioner Clemens.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons.
We're adjourned. Thank you. We have reconvened in open session. The board completed its work, finalizing the details of the superintendent contract. We will communicate those with Superintendent Johnson and present the new contract shortly. At this time, I think it's important to note, and I think that many of you already know, that today via email, the board received a threat to this meeting. I also think it is important to note that the email was received by me directly and also directly threatened my life and the life of my family. We are thankful for our partners in the Eau Claire Police Department who have been investigating this matter. And while I will have much to say about this in the next coming days, both as the board president and as a candidate in the upcoming April 5th election, the police have asked tonight that I share very few details as their investigation is ongoing. They are here tonight to help protect us. I don't think they believe there is a direct threat to us this evening based on their investigation so far, but thank you all for being here. Because of this, we have had asked in advance for our student pledge leader to stay home tonight. There was no reason to have an additional child here when we were not sure as to the status of our threat. So at this time, I will ask all that are willing and able to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the adoption of tonight's agenda. Again, because of our threat to our board meeting and to the personal safety of myself and my family, we have decided to move our recognitions for the evening. So at this time, I would ask first for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda and then for an amendment to strike recognitions from the agenda. So at this time, I would like a motion to approve, adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
I make an amendment to strike recognition as of right now.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. The motion carries. We now move back to the original motion of adoption of the agenda as amended to exclude recognitions. Is there any discussion further on the agenda? All those in favor of the adoption of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. Thank you. At this time, we'll now move on to our public forum. Board provides a 30-minute time period in which citizens may address the board to express viewpoints or concerns on agenda or non-agenda items. Each speaker is allowed up to four minutes to speak, provided they have new information the board has shared at. I am sad that I have to give this announcement that the board does not condone hate speech or any other aggressive speech in our district. And I will also remind speakers that the board does not hear personal complaints of any member of the school district nor any individual associated with the ECASD in speaking. I know that many of you are here tonight to speak on insurance, and I don't think that there's going to be a problem with that, but given recent events, I unfortunately need to make these statements as well. At this time, we will commence with our public comment. Our first speaker tonight is virtual, and that is James Walker. As you begin to speak, please state your name and address. Terry will have the timer up for us. If you do run out of your four minutes, I will interrupt you. I apologize for that in advance.
And I have to apologize, it's not coming up right here. I'm having Justin come in, but I will have the four-minute thing on here.
That's fine, I will try to keep an eye on you occasionally.
Okay, so I'll just raise my hand.
Yes, thank you.
As I get this to...
So Mr. Walker, yes, there you are. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
You can. If you could state your name and address for the record.
James Walker, 3607 Cummings Avenue, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, 54701. Well, you know, I saw the posting on the school website about the threat, and so I thought I'd just call in and say that I'm very proud of members of the school board here, and that I hope that that person is a very tiny minority, and that the police investigated thoroughly. I just think it's awful situation in this country when people who are putting in their time to work for the better education of our children have to face these kinds of threats. It's just, what does this country come to where people on the school board of education face threats against their life? It's just awful. So I just thought I'd call in and say thank you for your service.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lori Plackey-Worth.
Lori Plackey-Worth, 2229 Trillium Drive, Eau Claire, Wisconsin. I am going to begin with a short prayer. Father, Creator of life, you are ultimately in control of all world events, to work them together for your purpose. The children in this district are precious to you, and we ask that we adults open our ears, speak with wisdom, and take actions which lead to effective and loving academic instruction of your children. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I 100% want to start with condemning the threat that was received today. It's no, it's obviously no, it's not a hidden thing that I don't agree with much of what's been going on in the last couple of years with the school board, but there's no excuse for that from anyone. And as the last speaker said, I do understand the tireless hours you put in, and I appreciate anybody that does that. I have been hearing a couple of rumors going around that seem to have been started within, and so I wanted to address a couple of those. I heard that someone is spreading rumors that the new school board member candidates are behind the claim against the SERTY bonds from the last meeting. I just want to set the record straight, that is not the case. There are three of us and three of us alone. I've also heard rumors that someone is spreading a big partisan money funding for certain school board members, candidates, I should say, which should not be. It's not a partisan issue. However, I do have three flyers here, and two of them are actually funded by the Democratic Party of Eau Claire, and they are for two sitting board members.
Ms. Plackey-Worth, we did not hear comments about sitting board members or any other person in the district. Thank you, your comment is ended.
I don't, I think I can go on with the rest of my...
You may not. You have violated our rules repeatedly in these meetings. You are not allowed to make personal comments about any member of the board or any member of this district, and you will not be allowed to continue. Your time is done. Thank you.
Who did I direct that against?
Two sitting members of the board, specifically myself and Marquell Johnson. Now, I will no longer engage in speaking with you. If you continue to disrupt the meeting, we will stop the meeting.
I will check if that's within the law, but...
Our next speaker is Deb Zanoni.
Good evening. I'm Deb Zanoni. My address is E. 8202, 260th Avenue, Elk Mountain, Wisconsin, 54739. In June of 2015, I retired from the Eau Claire Area School District after a 26-year career as a special education teacher. Since that time, I have happily served as a substitute in the district. In six of the seven years since I retired, I have taken on long-term substitute jobs, and for me, they have been rewarding experiences. I want to thank the board for recognizing the value of retirees from this district, which was recently demonstrated by a raise in subpay and a daily bonus for district retirees. The letters sent to retirees sharing the information on the new pay was very complimentary. I no longer have the letter to quote from, but the essence of the letter was to express the value the district had for retirees, and I took those words to heart. However, it has recently come to my attention that tonight you may be voting on health and dental insurance plans that could significantly affect all retirees. And I say "could" affect as the potential impact has not been communicated to retirees prior to tonight. But I do know that moving retirees to a separate group is a significant change being proposed. If the impact of the change is minimal, I apologize for taking up your time. If the impact is significant, then I would like you to consider these questions. Does the lack of communication with your retirees regarding the proposed changes and the secretive and underhanded process that brought us to this point really demonstrate how you value your retirees and the years of dedication they have provided to this district? And how many retirees will choose to sub for the district if this is how they are valued? What is the historical context to providing insurance to retirees as part of other post-retirement benefits as written in the employee handbook? If that historical context isn't addressed in tonight's presentation, I ask that you research that information prior to voting. Does this proposed plan for retirees apply to every single retiree, including those with individual contracts? There are many unanswered questions that should be addressed by the board before action is taken, and actions do speak louder than words. I turn 65 in November, so this is a short-term issue for me, but for other retirees, this will significantly impact their futures, especially my colleagues that are retiring this year and who made their decisions to do so based on information that you may now be changing. Please consider these questions, specifically as it relates to breaking the retirees into their own insurance group when the insurance presentation is made tonight and when making your final decision on the health and dental insurance of your former and future retirees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Archie Ecker.
Good evening. My name is Archie Ecker, and I live at 1405 Willow Lane, Eau Claire. And I wish that I was here to talk about some mathematics curriculum issue that, as we've done in the past, or some new mathematics adoption. Those are exciting things to discuss, but alas, I am not. I taught high school mathematics for 36 years before a difficult decision to retire from the classroom just last school year. Currently, I am committed as a long-term substitute, teaching pre-calculus at Memorial High School. I'm writing, or standing here telling and asking that you do not elect to separate health insurance into separate groups, active versus retired employees. Although a choice between remaining as part of the employee group or looking elsewhere for health insurance was mentioned as a future option at information meetings, it was never presented that retired employees would be placed in a separate group with a higher premium. This information was only made known to me last week, and it is historically unfair. The relationship between ECASD and its retired employees is a vital relationship to maintain within the community. In my decades at Memorial High School, I worked with several interns from UW-EC and even former students that sat in my own classroom that are currently active teachers in ECASD, some at Memorial High School. We do help find and retain good hires. I and other retired personnel maintain many relationships and connections with the current active staff. Your retired staff members serve as ambassadors to ECASD and to the community. We can have an impact on staff recruitment and also on student open enrollments. For example, up in Rhinelander, a few weeks ago, I met a family from Wausau looking to move to Eau Claire area soon, this spring, and they asked me about the Eau Claire School District, and I'm like, let's sit down and talk. I was excited to share stuff with them. As retirees, we don't just sit on a couch or linger around the golf courses. Working in the field of education has always been a challenge, and it gets more challenging with time, especially the past few years here, I suppose, with COVID complications, but it has always been demanding. So the timing of this proposal to sort active versus retired employees into different insurance premium groups is hard for me to understand. We've struggled through so much lately, and even in the last decade or the years before that. Your recently retired or soon-to-retire employees have endured a lot. It seems like a good time to take care of people, their mental health, et cetera. So sometimes things look good on paper, but think about how they impact loyal people and how much that could come to cost. Again, I would ask that you please keep all your employees in one health insurance group, and thank you for hearing me out this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lori Kepke.
Good evening. My name is Lori Kepke. I live at 2704 East Dublean Lane in Eau Claire. I also am a retired employee of the Eau Claire Area School District, 20 years in Eau Claire, six years in a prior school district as a school counselor. I'm here because the insurance changes will affect me as well, but I am here because I need to learn and hear from the board what you are dealing with. What are the changes? What are the financial impacts on the entire district? I understand I may have to make decisions, personal decisions, that are right for me. I may not like to have to make that decision based on what I hear tonight, but this is how a public entity works. This is how a public school works. Issues come up. Funding is part of that. We look at what our options are. We look at where can we squeeze one place so it doesn't affect another. That's how public school works. I understand that. I support that. And even though it may affect me in a way that will financially burden me a little bit more, I am so thankful that we have that process. This is how democratic processes work. And I applaud you and appreciate that you make many very difficult decisions, knowing that you are not going to make everybody happy. And you are doing your best under incredibly strict funding situations. Trying to say that diplomatically, that you have to make the best decisions possible in a public school system that educates over 11,000 students, and it is going to affect some people in a way that we might not agree with. But this is how public entities work. We look at issues. We discuss them. We share information. We gather input. Decisions are made. Not all people are going to agree with the decisions, but they have to be made. I was planning to come to the board meeting to get information tonight, and I will, but the events that unfolded during the day made me even more committed to come and say what I just said to you. And I was thinking about how what happened today is exactly the opposite of how democratic processes should work. The process that you as a public entity, a public board, go through making difficult decisions. What happened today is exactly the opposite. Intimidation, threat, bullying, those will never be part of public discourse and good public decision-making. We can disagree. We can have very different opinions on things, but unless we can have respectful conversation, and I've been at the last couple of board meetings and have been frankly very disappointed in how that public discourse tried to happen.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kepke, that's your time.
So, thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Our next speaker is Deng Yang.
My name is Deng Yang. My address is 2003 Meadow Lane, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, 54701. My pronouns are he, him, his, and I'm here tonight because of the recent news that I had read prior to the meeting today, and I want to express my support for not just you, for President Norden, but also the rest of the board and educators. I also want to thank and acknowledge everybody else who is here, who I'm echoing to as well. Their thanks for all the work that you've done, the recognition of all the work that everyone in the district has done too as well. So I want to recognize and I want to thank all the retirees, all the educators, all the staff in the district who have been working so hard. I'm a father of two children who are enrolled in the Eau Claire Area School District, and as I think about the words that must have come in that email from, I assume, anonymous individual, a specific threat to your life, to your family, to the rest of the board, I recognize that these types of strategies are completely inappropriate, but beyond that, the strategies that they attempt to employ to intimidate, to bully, it reaches beyond just you and your family. It is an intent to symbolically articulate that any sort of discourse that is productive should be shut down, and I'm really happy to know that there is going to be productive and hopefully ongoing discourse that's going to be helpful. I reflect, I've been reflecting over the last two hours since I've read the article with very little information provided there, but it reminded me of the lessons that I learned in public education too as well, when I was a student in K-12 and also a student in higher education regarding the strategies of empowering the people as you're in the process of change management, as you're in the process of navigating relationships. And I've heard dramatically a lot of information about relationships. I've heard a lot about the interest amongst all the individuals here about support for public education. Regardless of different sides and opinions, it's clear to me that there's a lot of interest in ensuring that our students are given the best education, that they're in as safe an environment as possible. As educators, I see that you're role modeling, trying to empower students to be their best. As I continue to learn a little bit more about the situation with the insurance, I would ask you to also consider role modeling that for empowering your staff too as well. So I want to thank you for all the work that you're doing, know that I have your support and that you have my support, that I'm excited that you continue to do the hard work that you do. I'm also reminded of something that I continue to tell my daughters. They're very young, so they tell me how scared they are, and fear, I always tell them, is an appropriate feeling to feel, but I tell them that it's okay to be scared as long as you continue to be brave. Thank you very much for continuing your bravery.
Thank you. That concludes this evening's public forum. At this time, we'll move on to our regular reports. Commissioner Lyons is not able to be with us tonight, so we will forego the Budget Development Committee report that we usually have and move directly to the Legislative Liaison. That is Dr. Johnson.
The U.S. Department of Education recently released a new fact sheet highlighting how states and local school districts can make use of funding from the American Rescue Plan Act's elementary and secondary school emergency relief funding to support high-quality career and technical education programs. In particular, the fact sheet emphasizes that career and technical education as a powerful way to reengage students to cultivate high-demand skills needed for jobs of the future. On March 25th, the Wisconsin After-School Network will partner with the Department of Public Instruction to provide a 90-minute webinar focused on how the ESRD-3 20% set aside for activities to address learning loss due to COVID-19 can be met by the inclusion of comprehensive summer and after-school programs that implement evidence-based intervention strategies via partnerships between districts and community-based organizations. On Tuesday, March 8th, the Governor's Special Session Call was gathered in and immediately adjourned by both Houses of the Legislature. The Governor had called a special session on a plan to spend some of the state's projected budget surplus on a $150 refund to every Wisconsin taxpayer and an additional $750 million for schools. During the same time, the following bills are headed to the Governor's Office for Signature or V bill. The cardiac arrest bill, which has no position from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, microschools also have no position, reading readiness gifted in talented programs, landscape analysis participation, the parents' rights bill, all those are opposed by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. DPI reports, the rear organization of Milwaukee Schools, also opposed by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Thank you.
Thank you. When our consent agendas for each consent agenda, the board considers approval with one vote and without discussion. The board has been provided background material on each item or has discussed at a previous meeting. If any board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Tonight's superintendent consent agenda includes Human Resources Employment Report, 2021-2022 Budget Adjustments, gifts in the amount of $9,673.93 for the period of February 1st, 2022 through February 28th, 2022, payment of all bills in the amount of $5,760,952.15, and net payroll in the amount of $4,218,391.25 for the period of February 1st, 2022 through February 28th, 2022, financial report, February 2022, and five-year capital project bids. At this time, I would hear a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Terry, if you would please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Norden.
Yes.
Commissioner Zur.
Yes.
Commissioner Becca.
Yes.
Commissioner Clemens.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons.
At this time, after the approval of the employment report, I would like to turn it over to Superintendent Johnson for an announcement.
Good evening, Chair Norden, board members, executive team members, and guests this evening. Jennifer Kish graduated from the University of Wisconsin at Platteville in 2011 with a bachelor's degree in middle-level education. She also earned a master's degree in ed leadership from Edgewood College in 2019. She holds licenses through the Wisconsin DPI in regular ed, grades four through eight, alternative ed to work as a principal and to work as a director of instruction. Jennifer began her teaching career at Jack Young Middle School in Bearable, Wisconsin. She worked as a math teacher from 2013 to 2020. Well, in this position, she was also a grade-level team leader and a PBIS coordinator. In 2020, she moved into a behavior interventionist position within the same district, and she is currently working in this interventionist role as well as serving as the school's alternative ed coordinator and the virtual engagement liaison. Jennifer will be joining the Eau Claire Area School District as the new principal at Lake Shore Elementary for 2022-23.
Thank you. We're excited for the new hire and for a great future for Lake Shore. At this time, we'll move on to the board's consent agenda. The board's consent agenda tonight includes minutes of closed session, March 7th, 2022, minutes of board meeting, March 7th, 2022, base wage increase approval for non-affiliated and hourly staff. I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda.
Second.
Terry, if you would please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Norden.
Yes.
Commissioner Zur.
Yes.
Commissioner Becca.
Yes.
Commissioner Clemens.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
At this time, we'll move on to matters reserved for board action. We have one item, health and dental insurance renewal rates. I'll turn it over to our insurance consultants and possibly some of the executive staff. I don't know who's all doing the presenting. Is it just you tonight?
Just me.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your time this evening. My name is Tanya Luissa, and I am with USI Insurance Services. My counterpart, Suzie, also works in your group. She was not able to be here. She's at another board meeting this evening, so she sends her regards. So tonight, we're going to talk about the RFP process, so...
Just, just one second. I think we're trying to get the presentation.
Oh, sorry. I apologize.
Maybe we'll just take them live.
Sorry, we apologize.
That way everyone can see it before you get too far into it.
Maybe it froze up somewhere along the line, so... We'll restart.
What moment will we restart the displays?
I think this moment, as we're figuring it out, just to let you know, to say to Dr. Bika that I do have you on my screen to watch, you know, for an unmute for you to join in the discussion, but don't be afraid to flag me down also in case my attention wanders. I will try to make sure I'm looking in your direction as well as the rest of the board tonight. Thank you for joining us from your spring break. Or would you, do you think it'll just be a few more seconds?
That would be helpful if we could restart the system.
Yeah, we apologize, but it's...
Sure, 10 minutes?
10 minutes would be wonderful.
I would hear a motion to take a 10-minute recess to make sure that our technology is ready.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll recess for about 10 minutes. Hopefully, we'll at the very least have an update for you at 7:45.
You want me to restart?
He's in there. He's working on her. He's trying to...
Does he, is he aware?
He knows that, well, he knows what we're trying to do. He's trying to fix that issue.
So I press the whole system shutdown.
I'm just going to restart mine.
You go ahead and restart your computer just to get fresh.
Yeah.
The screen should still be live.
Yes.
We'll go where we can, we shut it off.
You know, I couldn't move my whole dongle.
Yeah.
It was really odd, but I don't know.
Just restart it and log back in. Or sit for a moment, or just turn to our audio.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Sorry, both of us. This is the way it was supposed to go. I'm like, I'm in the middle of the thing, and it's like, it's not responding. I don't need to say...
And I wasn't sure what was where, so I was, I saw it up here, so I just kept going.
Yeah, I'm like, well, no, this isn't actually what happens, but...
It's okay.
You know, technology just doesn't always behave like this.
Yeah, it's all right. They said it was a little anticlimactic, climatic, kidding.
Oh, yeah, it sounded like, whoa. I know. I'm just glad we had some tech people here because I didn't have an idea.
Oh, and some, I mean, I know what it was. Something, but when you're newer here, it's a little, yeah.
And it's like, and I went, oh, well, it's okay.
It's good to have those tech resource people.
Yeah.
I work in my own office, sometimes I like what it is.
Right, I know, yeah.
First thing I always tell you, go to the chef's system.
I know, restart.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I couldn't do that in the middle of the snow.
I didn't know what was going to happen.
Yeah.
I'm not going to bump something.
No, you're, you're, that's not correct. Just make sure.
You're, you're good.
Didn't want all of a sudden have, you know, stuff going all over.
Right, right.
Anyway. Try to anticipate every question somebody could ask.
Well, sure.
Doesn't help.
No.
Hi there. Good, how are you?
Better, hopefully, in a couple minutes.
Oh, yeah. I don't know what happened. It was just like, it was fine. Like, froze, like, that was a non-response.
What were you seeing out here?
Well, I saw, you know, like, what I normally put up there to follow along with the agenda, but like, when I would, and when I click on it here, it's supposed to move it along up there, and it just wouldn't pay anymore.
It just froze.
It was just not responding. Like, I couldn't get my mouse to even show up there, so it was totally like, froze up. It was working fine, and then all of a sudden, it just like...
Yeah.
And so like, normally what I do here is I, um, see here.
It's a reflex, it was here. You just feel like...
I usually, see, I can move this up there, but, no, see, this is weird too. This is like, why, I don't even... I don't know. This is really odd, what's going on.
I know them well, enough to say that.
You can't pull it up at a hard time.
No.
So normally what I can do, um, like the scoreboard, you know, I normally move that. I, I still don't know why this is even, you know, there's some goofy things going on here, you know?
Yeah. That don't put it, not mean, right, it's quite like that.
No, but anyway, it's going on. Like, this doesn't even...
Terry, you want me to stop your timer?
Well, see, that's just, still, I don't know that I, I don't know why it's, like, it...
Can we go back? For both?
Okay, it did stop.
It stopped, it was there.
Okay, yeah, so that got rid of that. So now it's just a matter of, like, if I can put it up there.
All right.
This is just one of those odd things that, because of technology thing.
I'm wondering, should we, are copies of this?
Well, we could. If this, if this doesn't get going, we're going to have to, I guess, because this is like a technology thing.
I don't want to have it printed out in color. My copy is, is bad color.
I don't think people would mind if I had a Lisa 732, so I'd avoid it. However many we got, if you want to share.
We can do 30, yeah, just because I know it needs to run your copier, but it's not really great.
Oh, yeah.
Just in case.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's technology.
We do have the engineer for the backup system here tonight observing for some of our audio challenges. So, this is, this is a good, what's going to happen now, what's going to happen, we have a person that we expect to... Mr. Johnson?
Mike?
Will you, if this does happen, will you read something to your...
I've got my...
Have any...
After all the decisions made, which means...
You know, I actually, you know, it's not everybody, but... I think it's pretty... I'm sure that really will... No, I'm still, I'm still... I can make it up. I'm good on the line. Look at that, it's going to be very clear. Yes, I'm ready. Yes. And it just says something, James. They're going to turn it on. We're going to act it out.
10 years, right? I don't think this pair is going to close this page here.
I can make it up, I'm good on the line. Look at that, it's going to be very clear. Yes, it's very clear. Yes. I'm sorry.
Show the wrong thing, isn't it?
I'm curious, can I try this?
Secretary.
Oh, I think I need to move this.
That is your secretary.
So, there, this, okay, can I?
Yeah.
Here, okay, before we do that, can I?
Start your presentation.
Can I try this?
Not sure what that is. Can I have you close the presentation or restart it?
Well, you're restarting that, can I?
Go in from the beginning.
Can I go back to this? Can I just quick call back to the board? Just wanted to make sure it follows along here before, okay.
This is, this was attached, I see.
So now it didn't go back to mine, unless it has...
No, it should have switched back.
It didn't switch back, so that's the issue, yeah. It's not switching back.
So, James, what's your, like, I heard we might be doing it just kind of handouts?
We have handouts.
We do have handouts we're doing, making right now, because it's something with the technology not switching back, so that's what is happening right now. So I won't, for your...
It's more like a we know.
So, what's that?
You're talking, we know.
Yeah, it won't be able, if that's not working, I'm not going to be able to show it.
I can't get it in the voice, so I won't see it at all.
Do you want me to go print out a copy? Okay, I will, just one more. Yeah, do you want me?
How long is it? It's really long, right?
Here.
It is back there.
Can I just, because my printer's, yay.
So we're going to go for handouts?
Handouts.
Yeah, okay.
Terry? For all...
Yeah, but don't...
Sure, Mika.
She went to get some, she started them on the copier, but I think she's going to grab them. I believe.
I was in Word docs, I'll check mine.
Just like, like, something's going on on mine, because it wipes my name and password out, and it doesn't, doesn't plug in, so I don't know.
I'm in Word docs.
Hey, that's a good presentation. Thanks. I recognized earlier this week that I had come from my parents, and I no longer have properly access to technology. So if I could just have everybody's attention just for a second?
I don't know if I can get anything up. See, it wasn't, it wasn't working anymore.
I'm not going to gavel us back in, because we continue, as you can tell, to have a technical difficulty at this point. We are running copies of the presentation for everybody here, so we're going old school. Well, I think we'll probably continue to work on it, but so please bear with us. I'm sorry that this is the case. I'll probably make an announcement to people online once we come back and the mics are back on, that, you know, it should be available through Board Docs online for those at home. So bear with us, we'll, we'll restart as soon as everybody's got the ability to see the presentation, even if it means flipping pages. So, thank you, and I apologize for the difficulties. So you can come and grab me when we're ready to go. Do you want me to go print out a copy? Okay, I will. Just one more. Yeah, do you want me?
How long is it? It's really long, right?
Here.
It is back there.
Can I just, because my printer's, yay.
So we're gonna go for handouts?
Handouts.
Yeah.
Terry? Here's my. For.
Yeah, but don't.
Sure.
She went to get some. She started them on the copier and I think she's going to grab them. I believe.
I was in Word docs. I'll check mine.
Just like what's I, something's going on on mine because wipes my name password out. Doesn't, doesn't plug in. So I don't know.
I'm in Word docs.
Hey, that's a good presentation. Thanks. I recognize earlier this week that I have come my parents and no longer properly access. So if I could just have everybody's attention just for a second.
I don't know if I can get anything up. See, it wasn't.
I'm not gonna gavel us back in because we continue, as you can tell, to have a, a technical difficulty at this point. Uh, we are running copies of the presentation for everybody here. So we're going old school. Uh, I think we'll probably continue to work on it. Uh, but so please bear with us. I'm sorry that this is the case. Um, I'll probably make an announcement to people online once we come back and the mics are back on that, you know, it should be available.
Yeah, they're almost done. Yeah.
Board docs on, online for those at home.
Yeah.
Um, so bear with us. We'll, we'll restart as soon as everybody's got the ability to see the presentation, even if it means flipping pages.
Yeah.
So thank you and I apologize for the difficulties.
Yeah, no, it is. Yeah, we're, we're heading up there.
All right, you got yours there. You finally was like.
I, I'm hoping, yeah.
Yeah, so we're getting more.
Mark, can you, you have.
Yeah, this is.
Okay, so you don't need one? Because Eric had needed. Please put one down there for me.
Sorry, from my right here.
Okay, thank you. Oh, that's the, oh, we have Word docs. Never mind that. I don't. We're good? I don't need mine. Okay. Should I get mine for one for town?
Uh, it's only for her.
And then I.
I'll go through.
Tell him good.
Thank you, Word docs.
Okay.
I think it's good.
Yeah. Unless that's different. Oh, so, yeah.
Uh, no, my. Okay, so you're good on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
These, what was your thing slides or does it not matter? Yeah, I have the crazy cat too, so it doesn't matter. It's teasing.
I'm here now. No, 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 no.
Thank you.
Thanks for all that work, Terry.
Well, this one will kinda, yes.
Keep you on your toes.
Yes, alright. It does, it's like.
All right, before I hammer this thing down, I'll just use my teacher voice to let you know we're about to start. So, uh, now I'll give you a signal to our mic in the back. All right, we will reconvene the meeting at this time. We continue to have a technical difficulty with displaying the presentation. For those of you that are viewing the, the meeting online, I encourage you to go to the Eau Claire Board Docs section. You can find that under the Board of Education tab on the ECASD website. Uh, the presentation is available there. Uh, it is not available there.
It will be tomorrow.
And it will be tomorrow morning. Thank you for that update. I would sort of maybe check that prior to opening my big mouth. Uh, for those of you in the room, I think we have intended to provide a hard copy of tonight's presentation to you. Is there anyone that does not have a copy right now? All right. Seeing, we're, I think we've got one for the one person that was saying they didn't have one. So I think we're ready to go. Tanya, I will turn it over to you again. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I am Tanya Wilson with USI Insurance Services. Thank you for your time tonight. Um, as I stated before this, Suzie was unable to attend, so, um, we'll walk through the insurance. Uh, so we're gonna talk about the RFP process. So as you're aware, we went out to market your insurance this year. Uh, the objectives, I'm gonna try to just stand my paper copy so I don't get confused. The objectives for the medical proposal process were to find a solution that addressed disruptions, um, offered both a narrow and a broad network. Uh, we also wanted rate caps to provide future rate stability that are not tied to your medical loss ratio. Uh, we wanted something that would include a wellness grant. You currently have a wellness grant of 25,000 annually and we wanted to continue that if possible. Working within your site clinic, like your ODAP or some other options, as well as the potential to premium, separate the premiums between actives and retirees. So those were our objectives for the RFP when we went out to market. The proposal responses, we had marketed to eight carriers and they are listed on this slide. Um, I will read them since we're kind of in an interesting situation tonight. It was Group Health Cooperative of Eau Claire, Medica, Pervaya, and WPS, who all declined to quote. We had Group Health Trust, WEA Trust, and Security Health Plan that provided a fully insured proposal. And we also began our exploration into self-funding that we had discussed last year at the board meetings. Uh, so we did get some self-funded information from both Security Health Plan and Anthem to continue that conversation going forward. With that, we'll move on to the health RFP highlights, which is the next slide. So I just wanna talk about this on a high level. As I said, we did get three fully insured quotes in. All carriers provided both the narrow and the broad network options. The narrow options all provided some type of premium savings. Rate caps were offered from the Group Health Trust for two years, so 2023 and 2024, at 9.5% and 18% respectively. And WEA Trust provided rate caps at 9.5% each year. Security Health Plan provided rate caps for five years with a range of 4.4 to 5.9, and they were not linked to that medical loss ratio as we discussed. So we wanted to kind of summarize things on the next slide beneath the RFP requests. So we spoke of the objectives for the RFP a moment ago. So we're just looking at the results. So Security Health Plan had met all the objectives that we were looking into. WCA or Group Health Trust did offer the two years of rate caps and they also offered partial funding for a clinic model, but it would not have been the brick and mortar clinic model that you have today. WEA offered the two years of rate caps but did not have a clinic solution included. So we moved security to the forefront of the conversations based on the fact that they met all the objectives that we have requested. It allowed employees to retain the same carrier, so we didn't have a carrier disruption or carrier change, continued with your near-site clinic, and the long-term rate stability that would take you out for five years. So some of the considerations that we had with this, we're looking for a long-term partner. We were looking at disruption, uh, both in moving carriers and so forth. The option, are we good?
My action.
Okay, so you can, I guess I can advance accordingly. All right. We'll try to get to the right side here. So we're all on the same page. There we go. Okay. So we were looking for a long-term partner, the disruption, the fact that they had a narrow network option, the clinic model that you currently have in place, um, is a great solution for staff. And then we did have that option to separate both the actives and the retirees. Security was the only one that provided that option. So when we're talking about medical loss ratio, um, essentially what is medical loss ratio and why do we care? Um, how a group is running is gonna impact your future increases. So it is certainly something that we keep an eye on. Um, currently there is a large variance, as you can see here, between the active group and the retiree group. So when you're looking at this, medical loss ratio for the active, um, group without the retirees is for 2020, 21 is at 90.4%. Meanwhile, the medical loss ratio for retirees is at about 152%. Uh, this brings the overall MRR, so when you combine the two, it brings them to about 98%. So this is something that any carrier takes into account when they're setting your premiums, because for every dollar you're sending in, they're sending 98 cents back out the door and they only have two cents to take care of all the calls and everything else that come into their office. So for comparison, let's take a look at your current plan and then the two options that we have, um, going forward. So the current plan is displayed here. As you can see, option two basically matches your current plan with the exception of the preventive prescription drug plan. So that was something that was added by Security Health Plan for the Eau Claire School District. It covers most of the commonly prescribed preventive prescription drugs at no cost to your members, and it includes categories such as asthma, diabetes, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, and mental health. Option three reduces the out-of-pocket expense and offers the district the option to eliminate, um, the bridge and reduce the HRA, which would still provide members with a lower out-of-pocket cost than they have today. So looking at that, it moves your deductible from a 510 to a 1500, 3000, and your out-of-pocket from 612 down to 3600. So the plan analysis, so let's walk through the financial option or the financial aspect of this. Your current annual premium, including the ODAP or the Oakwood Direct Access Care Center, is at about 25.7 million. When we are looking at, at option one, that is simply your renewal. So looking at your renewal would be an increase to the, um, premium of 2.3 million, um, which the budget cannot support. So we were exploring options to see what we could find that would meet that budget. So option two is a 5000, 10,000, as we stated. This is with the Simply One network offered through Security Health Plan, brings the total premium costs down to 22.6 million, which is about a 3 million savings. When we include the retirees separating, it brings that up to about 3.6 million. So again, retiree's separate plan is listed there as well. And option three, again, that's the 1500, 3000 deductible, also the Simply One network, approximate premiums there would be 24.7 million. So it would provide about a million dollar savings in premium to the, um, overall. The other notes here as far as the HRA, so you have an HRA that's been promised already this year, so that 855,000 is highlighted because that would be savings in year two, not in year one. The bridge savings of 665,000 is approximately what's being used today. So the bridge kicks in at a certain point, after they need a certain amount of deductible, they meet that, the bridge kicks in to help with some of those expenses. And then the retiree separation is about 421,000 in additional savings, bringing it to an estimated district savings of 2.8 million. The Security Health Plan rate caps, so this is where the long-term care or the long-term partnership comes into play. There are five years of rate caps on the table. They are linked directly to enrollment in Simply One. So they're not gonna look at your loss ratio. They're gonna look at what number of your participants are in the Simply One network, and that would plan accordingly. So under 010% or 09.9 is a 5.9% increase. So questions answered? Um, we do have Security Health Plan, the Oakwood Direct Access Care Center, as well as Marshfield Clinic are all committed to assisting members, those that want to move to Simply One and move to Marshfield providers. They are providing resources for all staff members for that. They will also be at all open enrollment meetings so that members can ask questions and potentially redirect or move their care over to Marshfield. Um, members can receive, remember, all their services at the ODAP Center or the Oakwood Direct Actus Care Center for free. So there's no cost to members to use that service, and they are going to be adding mental health services to that facility this year as well. So members who do enroll in the Simply One network will have a warm outreach. So they will get an actual warm phone call from someone who can talk through questions, help them to schedule care, to find a primary care physician, whatever their needs might be. So we did, in the event that there would be a potential decision made, um, upcoming and existing retirees would be invited to attend an informational session regarding the health insurance plans. I think this would be advantageous, not only, um, if you do remove retirees, but in the grand scheme of things, it helps them to better analyze what they can use their HRA dollars for. And we will have experts there from Security Health Plan as well as independent brokers who can talk through any questions they might have, help them on an individual basis to find the right fit for them. Dental, there are no changes to premium for the 22, 23 year. And with that, I will move to next steps and see if there are any questions that I can help with.
Thank you, Tanya. Appreciate the information.
Yeah.
Reiteration. At this time, I will open the floor to comments and discussion from board members. No, I would find it helpful if you brought it back to the slide to have three options on them.
Yeah. This one or do you want the benefit?
That's the one that's for me if other board members need to see other information. Commissioner, is there?
I'm hesitant to go first. Um, so I am, I am slightly disappointed that those listening sessions haven't happened for retirees yet. I think that that information, um, could have been helpful, um, to better inform folks in this room and, and across our district who have given countless years of service and, uh, in, in great gratitude, um, to them. And I think that it would help all of us probably understand, um, a bit more what the individual, um, the individual, I guess, more situational, uh, sort of, it's really, it's really hard because everyone's gonna be different. And it's hard for us to know what that actually means for our retirees. Um, and so I think that it would have been helpful, um, perhaps for some of those conversations to have happened or perhaps for us to have seen some examples of what does it look like for someone with two years left and very healthy or someone who, you know, perhaps is struggling, having some more health issues. Um, because it's, you know, when we were discussing or, or looking at these situations, you know, we're looking, we're looking at numbers on a piece of paper and, and we're looking at all of the different situations that exist in our district from a staffing perspective. And, um, and we have to make, um, there's, there's, there is no money. There is no money. And so how do we, where are our priorities going to be and how are we going to answer, um, some of the other challenges that we have in, um, in staffing and in employee management and how do we, how do we attract the best and keep the best here? And that's, those are really, really tough decisions. Um, and with inflation the way that it is and with cost of living the way that it is, we had to make, uh, you know, we had to have conversations that were, that were very, very difficult, um, but took, it took every single penny of those cost savings at option two and option three and put it back in the pockets of our staff. Um, but I do think that there's a missed opportunity in, in perhaps having those conversations with our retirees, um, ahead of this vote, uh, ahead of this conversation, um, so that we really are making, um, an informed decision.
Commissioner Clements?
So looking at the, the chart that you.
So looking at the chart that you have up right now. So option one is essentially a renewal of the existing open plan.
Correct.
So with a nearly $2.4 million cost in the first year to renew. So as Commissioner Zer mentioned, you know, we don't have control over our revenues. We only have control over our spending, really. So earlier tonight, we, the board, voted to increase salaries up to the full CPI, which is as high as we're allowed by statute to do. It's at 4.7%. The estimated budget impact for that is $1.67 million. So you can see, like, if we renewed the insurance at the current rate, there would be no CPI increase. You know, we'd be going backwards, just, you know, just in terms of the scale of the decision.
I just, I, I'm not sure that, I think that number is not quite accurate. I think, I mean, the 4.7 that we've approved is a larger impact than 1.6 million, correct?
Correct. The board voted on two of the three groups tonight.
Right, and I, we have scheduled the ratification of the ECAE. Oh, so that's just tonight's, I'm sorry, yes, just tonight's. But that will, you know, I guess it is important to note that we have offered the 4.7, the maximum amount that we're allowed, to our certified staff as well, which is our largest group. Is that correct? And I'm saying that right? I sometimes, right? That ratification is coming, that's working its way through. So, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify that while that budget impact has already been done, the board has already committed to that going forward.
Do you want the total impact?
It would be helpful, yes.
Just over 5.6 million.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
So it would have been helpful to have some of that information, you know, presented before, kind of in tandem, because these decisions are linked. You know, we can't really make one decision without kind of knowing what else, what other major financial decisions we have to make every cycle. And, you know, for me, someone who uses or has used a wide network and been able to take advantage of that, and knowing that many people in our district, district employees do as well, it's not good. You know, that's a big change, not a positive one. But in terms of just where we're able to allocate resources, we're really handcuffed by our revenue. So we essentially can do some movement on salaries, or we can keep the existing insurance. We can't really do both without essentially eating up our entire savings in a year or two. So. So we, at least personally, I think we've heard a lot from the impacts that changing insurance is likely to have on a significant number of our current employees and retired employees, and it hurts. But we're trying to figure out how we can, for lack of a better word or phrase, how do we monetize this to try to maximize benefits for current and former employees for the resources that we have? And we know that that's, that those benefits are not equitably felt by everyone who's experiencing or using our insurance system in particular in different ways.
Dr. Bika, is there anything that you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions, really, maybe for Abby. If this might, well, an important consideration for us as we were learning about the insurance, the plan options in closed session, is the way that the district would provide resources to assist the retirees in finding the best plans for their individual situation. And I know that it's not, it's difficult to provide sort of an example as part of this presentation tonight because everyone is going to be very different, and there are a lot of, there are a lot of solutions that are available to people. I wonder if, would this be a time that Abby might talk about, you know, really kind of some of the key pieces on how the district would go about helping the retirees to meet their needs, and the things that we talked about in closed session that were important to us in the decision-making?
Okay. I'm going to jump in. Abby is right here. But we do want, insurance is a very, very personal decision. So everyone is in a very different scenario, situation, and I completely understand that. I'm a cancer survivor, so I know it's a very heartfelt, personal decision. It was difficult to provide a particular estimate for a person because there are many factors. So if a person is coming out of a group plan and going to be rated individually, their age, their location, whether they're a tobacco user, if they're looking at individual coverage or coverage for them and a spouse or family, those all come into play along with the plan design that they want. So we were concerned that if we put a few examples out there that would just, oh, I can get that, I'm 60 and I'm about at that age, you know, that income structure, but changing that income $1,000, $2,000, $5,000 can make a difference on the premium. So we thought it would be a much safer route to not provide examples. We will absolutely provide the expertise of Security Health Plan in their individual products, as well as an independent broker to bring in plans that retirees can have a one-on-one conversation with them so that they understand, here's option A, B, C, whatever their options are, so that they can make a personal decision.
Can you just move to that slide so that they can? Yes.
Yes.
So should the board actually decide to make a decision tonight? We proactively set up these opportunities for current retirees or soon-to-be retirees to actually sit down with the vendors that Tanya is talking about to have those one-on-one conversations? Because we're not able to provide the examples that both Dr. Bika and Tanya are talking about. And so this is the opportunity for people to come in, hear some informational pieces, and then be able to set up one-on-one meetings with these vendors so that they can drill down to all the specifics that Tanya just got done relating to because there isn't a way to be able to provide an example that isn't going to give somebody misinformation about what they might be able to get without drilling down to the specifics of the individual.
And we realize this slide is not in the paper copies that we handed out. And so we do have a piece of paper provided if the board makes a decision tonight that we can pass out to everybody that's here with this information, and we'll be communicating that out in the next day or so as well.
Dr. Bika, the floor is still yours if you have additional questions or comments.
No, please go ahead.
Dr. Johnson.
So could you, could you just speak to, or kind of, how do these, you know, these particular one-on-one meetings work in terms of, do they also provide in terms of the timeframes of like transitioning and those additional steps for these individual plans? Does, as these meetings take place, all of that particular information is provided to those individuals as well?
Yeah, when they sit down to meet with them, we may not get everybody's individual meetings done these days. This is more of a time to bring the information forward. We're certainly going to be here, but if they can't meet on one of those days in an individual setting, we can certainly reach out to them after the fact. So we're not saying this is the only opportunity. There's going to be opportunity. And some people may feel more comfortable setting it up and not talking about it with everybody else in the room. So you can certainly do that as well. So we want to make sure people feel comfortable, and the best thing we can suggest is come with your information. So come with the understanding of knowing, for example, what types, you know, having your information, your address, et cetera, so that when they're sitting down with you, everything is available to look at those plan options if you want to do it those days. If you prefer to set something up, you know, on a side so you're not doing it during the meeting, they can take that information and reach out as well.
I guess for me, on a statement side, I think when I ran for school board, there were a lot of difficult decisions that I knew I was going to have to make, especially agreeing to be on the school board during the pandemic, which kind of is a question of intelligence at this particular moment. But other than that, though, some of the challenges that come with this is, you know, as Commissioner Clements discussed, the idea of the business finance aspect of it, using a business model to manage a people-to-people interaction. And this is, I understand very clearly the feedback that we were given from the retirees, and this is one of those challenging pieces. It will also, I'll make the point now before we, if we get to the point of voting, I will not be able to vote either way on this because of, I am married to a teacher, so, and to not compromise whatever happens here tonight, I'm unable to do that. But I tell you, in a better situation, if we could just honor that people-to-people aspect of it more than the business aspect, it's somewhat of a challenge. So, thank you.
You know, Dr. Johnson, I'll build on what you just said. I don't think when some of these agreements were forged that we could see the impacts of 15 years of chronic underfunding of our schools. Abby, I might be a little wrong here, so feel free to interrupt me, but I think even if state funding had kept up with inflation, our budget would be $12 billion bigger, and we wouldn't be sitting here having this conversation. But the state has underfunded us for the past 15 years. In fact, probably for the past almost 30 years since the funding formula went into place in 1993. Pandemic has hit everybody. We're all dealing with the impacts of inflation. We've had, you know, our 4.7% CPI increase that the board is committed to. It's putting money into our staff and investing in our children through those who touch them most directly in their work. Means that we have a commitment to that, but nowhere to go. Now, I do find it a little surreal that nearing the end of my first term, I am the second longest-serving member of this school board, but I think Dr. Bika will agree as our longest-serving member, that we have watched the district work tirelessly to try to find solutions to this ongoing problem, even as our budgets are not met with inflation, and we look down the barrel of a two-year biennium with no increase to students. I've, in my time on the board, seen several proposals come forward that the board has rejected. We've asked for committees to go and find us ways. Our first committee was successful and found us some modest savings, and the board approved those. Our second committee had not been able to find a solution. We don't have any solution to make. And unfortunately, as board members, we do sometimes have to make hard decisions. And if we're going to make an error, the board had, believe, has decided to err on the side of putting money in the pockets of our staff to keep them here. And if there were any other way to do it, we would do it that way. But I, for one, don't see it. And this particular proposal, while it will have impacts on both current employees who may feel that they need now to switch to Marshfield from their current provider or pay more in insurance, and on our retirees, who I empathize with your situation, but may have to make adjustments. I think it is the best solution if the ones that I have been presented with over the time I've worked. It is not a good solution. And as the board has worked over the past several weeks getting information from administrators, several, you sent, maybe you in the audience, but certainly others, sent us information and questions. I was glad, as usual, to be able to say, the board has been asking some of those questions. The administration has been responding them and giving us that information. I asked Abby a question just tonight, and she immediately had the answer for me. And I, I will say that the board has worked very hard to try to balance CPI increase, the cost of living, keeping our market balanced so that we can continue to draw on teachers. I think all of us in this room, retired or active teachers, understand the teaching shortage is not going to get better, and we must take action to make sure that our students in Oak Claire have the resources and the best teaching that we have going forward, and our health insurance, which our system is broken in Wisconsin and across this country. And until we have some fixes, both for our funding level, both for our insurance system, there are no solutions. And I've now gone on for a long time, and I hate the solutions that we have. But we have to make a decision, and I don't know that there's any better one. Thank you for bearing with me. Commissioner Zer. And, sorry, Commissioner Clements, and then Commissioner Zer.
Can you go back up to slide four? So this item was mentioned in the presentation, I think is important to mention. And as Commissioner Nordean mentioned, these options aren't good. I can use some other words, but we're in a public meeting. But the item that knows that rate cap there, the five years, kind of, we breeze past that a little quickly, but the option that's presented that was recommended to us as a five-year cap on our increases in rates, where if you look at the other two that bid, they only were offering to lock in for two years at over double the rates. And so you could see that they weren't really options, frankly. You know, if we went with those, we would be locking in nearly 10%. In one case, 18% annual increase in our health insurance rate. And then we'd be back at the market in two years. So, you know, as poor, I think, and compromising as the option is that's presented to us, at least we know what we're going to be getting for a little bit longer, and will help us the budget for what this reality will be.
Commissioner Zer.
So I just want to reiterate what I said in closed session, and the reason why I think it's important for us to be prioritizing wages over benefits. And I think one of the questions that, one of the questions that we had the opportunity to ask Director Marks was about, you know, what attracts new teachers to our district and its salary. And right now, I mean, I work in our CISA, I work in workforce development and college and career readiness, and I see what our region is looking at for wages, what they're looking at for shortages, what our unemployment rates are like, what the number of open positions versus the number of workers. And this is across all categories. But in the top six of those shortages, education is right up there. And if we're offered a 4.7% CPI, I guarantee you that other districts with better funding formulas, we're in, you know, we spend at the 32nd, what did you say, 32nd percent?
32%.
So there's, you know, 60, 70% above us that can spend that 4.7% and not change their insurance and not have to borrow from someplace else to pay that. But if we don't do it, our teachers will, they will leave. They will find better-paying jobs, and they will leave for the private sector, which wages are through the roof in the private sector right now. And so the decisions are awful. And I think you've said that it's not, it's not a good decision. But it was, it was insurance or it was a salary increase. Those were the choices. And to stay competitive, I don't see us saying no to a salary increase. I don't, we just can't do that. We just simply can't do it.
If you could bring up the options again. Is there any further discussion prior to a motion? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve option two as presented tonight. Is there a second? Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Zer. Seeing none, I will call the question. I hope it is apparent from the discussion that I'm not thrilled about that. Terry, if you will conduct a roll call vote, I'll remind you, you don't need to call Commissioner Lyons, who is not present.
Commissioner Nardine?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
You may need to call, I don't know if you heard. Dr. Bika, are you able to hear us?
Justin's working.
I'm going to send a text to Dr. Bika here, perhaps she's, she might be working in the chat.
All the streams gone.
What's that?
The stream is gone, I don't know what that.
Can she just message her vote?
I think she has to be able to respond. Hello, are you having some technical difficulties? Okay. Can you unmute at all? Like, can you, and can you hear us in the boardroom at all? We've called the vote, and you're up. I, yes, I understand.
Put her on speaker.
I suppose I can attempt to put you, like, let's, unfortunately, I think, let's, no, it's not your fault, of course, let's, okay. She just can't hear or see us right now from her end.
Justin says you're working to resolve it.
Yeah. So I just want, I have you on speaker here.
James is working out together.
So we're working on resolving.
Gosh, you guys.
If I can respond, I can respond to speak for you.
Put her on the microphone, I guess there's no mic.
I don't know how we can get it loud enough.
James is checking, so if you want to just give it a couple minutes, it's up to you.
Let's just give it a moment, we'll recess again, try to get you, and we'll restart the vote.
I'm so sorry, is there anything another way than that?
I don't, I don't know right now. Let's maybe have you.
Hold your phone up.
Just giving the vote within the chat, that's usable to you. I don't want you to watch you on a recess delay.
Right.
Just hold it by speaker.
Yeah. When did you, when did you lose?
I heard, I heard everything. It was right when they were going to start to call the vote.
Okay.
Naturally.
So I guess I, I guess I'm going to try walking over to the microphone and holding my phone up to bed.
Are you going to need tin foil?
This is fine.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
All right. So, Lori, Terry, we're going to try this. I will ask you, Dr. Bika, to please speak loudly when giving your votes, and also if you could physically motion with a thumbs up and/or a thumbs down in case your voice doesn't carry as well as I hope it does. Is that clear and okay to you?
Yes, it is.
Oh, there we're back. All right, well, I'm hanging up my phone then. All right, for clarity.
All you had to do was do that.
For clarity, Terry, I would like you to restart the roll call vote so we can hopefully proceed through it without delay. The motion is to approve option two as presented tonight, and I will once again call the question. So please restart the roll call vote.
Commissioner Nardine?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Do you have to stay up there?
How could it be my phone near the microphone that was somehow magic?
Next up's a comedy show. I'm for the school board.
Did we lose you again immediately before you were to vote? Yes, and then you can unmute. Okay, well, you're going to be up here, I'm going to send you over to Terry. She just can't hear us right now, so if you can just call her, hopefully we get through that part.
Start with her. Commissioner Bika?
Yep.
Commissioner Bika? Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
The motion is carried. At this time, we'll move on to monitoring of district results. We have one report tonight, this is the final report of OE nine, communication with the board. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Nardine. While we get, if we're able to switch back to OE nine.
I think we can actually.
On board docs. Yes, we are. The monitoring report, our summary of our compliance status, I will not read through the entire summary statement, but in respect to the evidence, we are in compliance with exception, as noted in the evidence. What I'd like to do then is, Terry, if you could scroll down to 9.1. Thank you. With communication to the board, the first, 9.1, in compliance with exceptions, the first 100% of the monitoring data is submitted per the annual work plan schedule. I did postpone, we were in compliance with exceptions, 13 out of 16 were submitted per the original annual work plan. The board has been very flexible in understanding with the other three, one of which was supposed to be tonight. Our three, we know the results are extremely important, but those will be ready, I know that we'll be discussing in the agenda setting tomorrow. Indicator two, we wanted to make sure that at least 11 of the 14 by July of 2022, we will be in compliance or compliance with exceptions. We are compliant with that, because already we have 12 of those fully policies and two for two on the results policies. For indicator three, that is in progress. We put no evidence for that because that will be by the end of 2022. We certainly hope that we do not find that we are not in compliance or failing to make reasonable progress without acceptable action plans for any OE or R. For OE 9.2, compliance, our board meeting agendas organized to clearly indicate what our board business is, those links were there for you. And in 9.3 as well, providing for the board in a timely manner info about trends, facts, and other information relevant to our board's work, compliance as well, written correspondence, programming process, even when they don't require board action. I do provide district updates, we do have staff updates, superintendent updates to board members, even when they're not requiring the action. I've also, you know, directed members of the administrative team to inform the board directly, carbon copying me as well, I have trust in them to share, indirectly contact the board, to share other items of note. For number two, work sessions, or even though it's not in the indicator, I would obviously take direction from the board if you felt I was not doing so, providing that information in a timely manner to you. That has not occurred thus far, so that's what I had placed in the evidence. For 9.4, scrolling down a touch, significant transfers of money, we are compliant with that. If there are, informing the board of that within funds or other changes, substantial changes with our financial condition, that indicator is mainly due to consent agenda items, and those occur every two weeks. We change those constantly. And then I put the other indicators are audits, our audit summary, where we transferred from one line item to another without having informed the board. 9.5, making sure that we have a variety of internal and external viewpoints, including facilitating promoting viewpoints from historically marginalized groups to ensure informed board decisions, in compliance with exceptions overall. The first indicator is that, you know, email addresses and contact information are linked on our website, that is linked as evidence. Number two, and you've heard this in past OEs from me as well, you know, utilizing committees and task forces with internal and external stakeholders, including historically marginalized groups, to make sure we have a diverse amount of perspectives. In compliance with exceptions, I do have some evidence there, and if you scroll to the next page, I even included, you know, the Safe Return to Schools Task Force, really when I started my tenure here over a year and a half ago. I have also shared with you that I think our SER three and our Safe Return to Schools this past year, with hearing from folks, yes, surveys are not the only method, but I bring up Mung PTA, I bring up Mung PTA in the future, I bring up the Power of Perception Group. But again, one compliance with, the exception would be student voice, and that always needs to be included. For 9.6, informing board of anticipated significant media coverage, I did share that, and I believe that is to be compliant. Masking information, and this is most recently, hiring events, December of '21, actually beforehand, and I brought it up, I believe, in the last, gosh, these months are running together, but as I've said in our staff update that I remember moments, about a billboard with my number on it, and how I shared that there were 12, you know, there were 12 people who shared information and gave their input, nine of whom were in support of our masking and three were not. You know, we found out about that, and then it was probably hitting the media, I think, within the next hour and a half. I think it was a morning in October. That's about the only time where there was such a tight timeline. But I wanted to share that with you. SR three funding and the transition from hybrid to four-day weeks, you know, basically one year ago, when we were making these determinations for elementary and then breaking off secondary, pretty much that was the start of the coherent governance model. We wanted to get it started right away. So we knew there would be significant media coverage on those types of events. 9.7, informing all of you, it's been compliant. If members have encroached into areas of responsibility assigned to the superintendent, or if the board or its members are noncompliant with governance, culture, or relations policies, I haven't been notified or informed in my communication with you and communication with staff, that is not the case. 9.8, treating all of you impartially and assuring that all members have equal access to information, if we scroll down a touch, compliance, I've shared that in board meetings in the past. Indicator one is very easy, when we distribute the electronic materials, it goes to all board members. If we adjusted it a touch with our student representatives, yes. But an indicator two, I articulate in the evidence a little bit, where we have had questions from board members in the past, that I've included their questions and answers to the entire board, and not naming the person by name, even though I believe that most would not mind if I shared that anyway, but here were some questions I'd gotten perhaps over the weekend or on a Thursday in preparation for Monday night's board meeting. 9.9, participate in the orientation of new board members, it isn't applicable with that indicator, we haven't had any where we've had the orientation, but I did want to share that I was president of the informational session in winter of '21 for potential candidates. So not applicable here yet. OE 9.10, anticipated noncompliance with any board or operational expectations policy. At this time, we gave some examples here where we've clearly articulated that, we have not had any at this point, so I wanted to share those, just, those are two examples of monitoring reports for operational or student results, they were separated out as the indicators. For 11, consent agenda, everything required by law or contract to be board-approved, the first one is, you know, the board meeting notes accompanying the board packet, and then, when applicable, giving supplemental information, it would be the superintendent's consent agenda. The second one is by law or contract to be approved by the board. For example, last year's DPI instructional minutes waiver was a prime item, and the second one would be, a second, I think, significant would be COVID paid leave dates, when we changed that, when Executive Director Marks had shared that with the board earlier this school year, where that is, that is a change, and that is, that is required by our contract as well. So 9.12, providing process for official board communications, we are not compliant on that. And I know, yeah, it's a tight turnaround time, April 1st, that's what spring break is for, for superintendents sometimes, but we haven't, we haven't, and I take full responsibility on that. You know, and part of that is, where Maida Miski had done a tremendous job, I did not include her on specific communication to the board, you know, we had communicated about that, and now we have, you know, and Terry, our new executive assistant, she has done some research already in the past couple, three weeks, where I think we have some pretty good models that we could, that are available to us, that are also reviewed and followed. Terry will be attending a conference next week for executive assistants around the area, actually around the state, statewide, and I know she'll, she's already connected with especially some of the larger districts like Alawasaw and Appleton, Sun Prairie, so I'm very confident we'll be able to do so on April 1st. 13, administrative disposition of complaints referred to the superintendent by the board. As of the 14th, when I prepared this, all complaints by the board where the board members had shared with me, you know, this is a formal complaint, please get back to this person, except for one, and really it was because I was unable to, it was really in progress, and it's still in progress as of, as of today, even a week later. So that's in compliance with exceptions, we won 100%. And then secondly, the same thing for the indicator, if the board feels I do not, they would definitely share so individually, but also during work sessions, that I have not been doing the job, I have not been achieving that objective. For 14, informing the board in advance of deletions of, additions to, significant modifications of, instructional programming, you know, ultimately, you know, that annual review of OE four for student success is very critical, so that was completed, yes, it was completed in the fall for student success, where we would be able to share some of those items. You know, regularly include information regarding instructional programming and impending significant change to our program or curricula, in compliance with exceptions. I give some examples there where we have done so, some evidence, summer data retreats, improvement planning, especially last spring and into the summer, and then how that had gone, those are significant for our planning moving forward and our growth. Flexibility in scheduling, especially with our middle schools in '21, '22, and administrative teaching and learning reorganization have shared very recently. Staffing updates, future programming highlights, major curriculum work, shared with the board in updates late March, early April. Now is prime time for staffing. I think I could also include. I think I could also include significant changes to our instructional program could also mean, you know, in the past with COVID, there hasn't been a lot of that. We've articulated certain things with Character Strong, adopting that, where Dr. Jeong had spoken about that in the fall. But ultimately, you know, it's our hiring processes that have changed, and I've kept the board apprised of that, our hiring event in December and how that had, you know, that was extremely positive, where we were able to hire between 45 and 50 FTE to support our students and families and colleagues. And we're continuing to do that. Moving down to 9.15. In conjunction with legal counsel, we provide the board with information concerning legal implications of actions under consideration by the board. We are compliant with those. Whenever the board has questions, I contact Steve Well immediately. If I have questions or concerns that come up from finance or from HR or for a variety of things regarding policy, I want to make sure that the board knows that I have contacted Steve Well. I believe they've been consistent and informative, even when things are not under consideration by the board. I think just to simply inform you whether it's not an action item per se. So with that, sorry to take 10 minutes to go through that, but I figured it would be better than just reading off the summary. So with that, I'll take any comments.
Thank you Superintendent Johnson. Just as a heads up for the board, Dr. Bika is no longer in the meeting. The tech problems have continued, and she's also away, so it's the four of us that remain. So at this time, I'll open it up to comments and questions from board members. Commissioner Zer, your finger is a little faster than Dr. Johnson's. And Dr. Johnson, you'll be after Commissioner Zer.
So in looking at OE in 9.14, I, that one has really stuck out to me as being very And I think, I think what I would just say moving forward, I mean, I agree, I agree with this, I agree with this entirely. I think what I will say moving forward is I know that curricular work has been mentioned as something that, you know, the staff are interested in getting back to, and it's something that you guys are motivated towards, and I'm excited about that because I do think that guaranteed and viable curriculum is really, really important to us. And I'm excited to see the results of that. So just moving forward, and something perhaps I would like to see along with notification is a kind of a summary of the big shifts, you know, what are the, what are the big changes or what are we, what are we doing? And I think one of the things that, and not that it, I knew, you had mentioned it and it was definitely communicated, but the role of interventionist was new. You know, that was new this, in this past year, and I felt like perhaps I wasn't as articulate about it as I wanted to be, like I didn't quite, I wasn't quite able to articulate what the role of those individuals were or what that was supposed to be in our schools. And now, after going through this monitoring process and understanding the EMLSS and the priorities and how those individuals are being used, I feel like it's come together for me. But perhaps sort of a summary would have been really nice with that, you know, just kind of giving us a bigger picture of what that means. You know, that just helps us in conversation with, with the community when, when things are happening. So yeah, if you can just, just moving forward.
No, I don't disagree with that. I liked, and it was spotty. And I think part of it's navigating through, in former districts, when I had to provide reports, you know, it was somewhat of a, somewhat of a different recognition. I mean, we have a formal recognition here, but to highlight whether I just do so on weekly communication or maybe every other week can help. Because I think at one point, I think we had a workshop with Sun Prairie board members, and I love the term, was it looking, looking back, looking forward? So that was kind of that end of the week. Okay, here's what was going on this past week. Instead of the tyranny of the urgent, hey, board members, it's Tuesday and I'd like to get, you know, get you up to speed on a certain issue. And then, okay, then it's the next Monday, hey, board members, I'd like to bring, instead of, instead of that, more of a looking back, here's what we had gone through, looking forward, here's what we hope to, I like the way Sun Prairie had phrased that. But maybe a part, especially with, with teaching and learning or with HR, you know, with hiring, with the curriculum work, the universal, a lot of good ideas on that that I think I can, and once again, in compliance with exceptions, I think that's something I can improve.
Thanks, Mike.
To bed, prepare the board.
Dr. Johnson.
Yes, for OE 9.15, you know, the evidence is fine. Moving forward though, we could also tally, I know the conversation has come up a couple of times, but when we outside of WEL, like because of what we pay to WASP, and they also have some level of legal consultation that's provided to us as, as board, it'd be interesting just to potentially kind of see the contrast of, because I know this has come up before, but contrasting in terms of the cost intricacy pieces of it, but also just potentially a different viewpoint from, since we're already paying for that, that particular assistance, what that assistance would look like contrary to going through our, our local representative as well. So I think moving forward, if we can just, you know, I think utilize that opportunity as well that we have afforded to us besides our local.
Thank you. If I could just tack on again to you, Dr. Johnson, I think even just noting, I know that the district does consult with WASB or WASDA, you know, legal counsel on some things as well, just as a gathering information. So just sending that out to the board too, you know, we also got information from our various professional organizations. I think that sort of tags on with not only us using that more, but also when we use it, just letting the board know that that's where it's coming from, which I think is probably standard, but just making a note of that we are getting different opinions as well. I think, I know when I was recently at the WASB convention, I was sharing some of the work that we had done over the past year, and the WASB attorney upfront said, oh, well, you know, you have all these particular concerns. And I was able to say, well, actually, we've consulted with our legal counsel and they answered A, B, and C. So certainly WEL Riley has done a fine job for us. But having those additional resources is always helpful. Commissioner Clements, is there anything you'd like to add at this point? Any other discussion? Hearing none, I would hear a motion to approve the monitoring report.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed? All right, the motion carries. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Clements, who is the third member in our agenda setting, to give us a recap for writing of our summary statement for the superintendent evaluation at the end of the cycle.
So summarizing the comments made by board members regarding OE nine, I did not add any items for strengths or weaknesses, but had two under omissions for lack of a better place to put them, frankly. One is OE 9.14 being particularly important, excited to see the results of this. Would like to see a summary of big shifts, changes to what we are doing in curriculums such as the role of interventionists, interventionists as an example. Having a summary of the meaning of that role and of interventionist would have been helpful to assist board members to communicate with our constituents and to the community as an example. And the other is OE 9.15, comment that evidence, well, the evidence here was fine, would we outside of WEL Riley or it would be interesting to see in contrast with WASP guidance as a different viewpoint since we already are paying for this membership, if we can utilize this service in the future. And I would add to Commissioner Johnson's comment that, and note when we're using that in the future.
Any additions or corrections, anything? Okay. So Commissioner Clements, you can send that on to me and I will file the report. I've asked Terry to help me remember so I can do it as soon as possible, get it off my plate. This time, we'll move then into our final agenda item for tonight. That is our regular board debrief, our time to reflect on our own performance as a board. And so I will immediately again turn it to you, Commissioner Clements, to take us through our debrief exercise.
Thank you President Nardine. I was about to get that email off. So obviously, we had, I think, perhaps the most weighty decision that the board sees in the recycle in terms of how do we allocate scarce resources to competing priorities. And for, at least for me, we've been, we've been working over this for the past several weeks in terms of getting information, trying to understand what it means, looking for creative solutions, asking staff to examine various scenarios. And I think from my perspective of how that went in open session when we were coming to present what we had, what staff had presented to us as an option is difficult. I think for me, it's not really possible to respectfully communicate the challenges that we're in, but I think that we, as board members, have attempted to do that within the confines of the meeting. And I think for me, the only thing that, the thing that we certainly, that certainly could have been done differently was how much and what information was provided and when, because it felt like that, that was an Achilles heel in this particular situation in terms of how we as board members could be communicating on the struggle that we are dealing with in terms of how do we, how do we process the decision. But I think the way that the discussion went in session was, was positive. With that, I would ask Commissioner Zer on your reflection.
Yeah, I was actually just making a note for, for our board self-evaluation. I think that that's a really interesting point of just, you know, how could we have communicated better with the community on this decision, perhaps taking that into consideration more in the next time? I think that's something that, that seems like a reasonable thing. I, I do agree that, I think, I think it was Dr. Bika that said this is the, just the hardest, most confusing, most difficult part of our job is this compensation sort of conversation because it's, it's really hard to, to put all of the needs and all of the considerations in the basket. And I feel like they've changed so much so rapidly in the last couple of years that it's put us in even a tougher spot. And it feels very difficult to handle it with grace when you just want to shake a money tree someplace and make it rain so you can take care of your people because we're a people business. And I think that, I think that I'm, that I'm proud of the work that we do to give every dime of money to the staff that we possibly can. They deserve it and they deserve infinitely more. So it's, I'm proud that we, that we made those hard decisions, even though they were hard and awful. We just have to, sometimes just have to make a decision when they're all bad. As far as, so I mean, I have the GC down, but also technology. It's the thing I wrote down, technology. I'm going to have to look at back there. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Zer. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, two things I think that we did well, you know, government, government commitment, GC two, four, C talks about the practices, practicing professional meeting decorum. And I think in spite of all of us being, you know, being heavily criticized, and some of us more personal, personally attacked, being able to compartmentalize and still come back and actually do, do the job that you signed up for. But also, you know, I think, you know, my own kudos to myself for GC eight, board members conflict, conflicts of interest of not going beyond and actually saying some things that potentially would be held liable. And then just to recurring on the theme that, you know, we, we, as a board, we as a district, you know, communication, communication is key, you know, and I think timing of communication is very important with small and our large decisions. And I think if, we just have to, we have to do better, you know, I think in that particular , thank you.
Commissioner Nardine?
I don't have a whole lot to ask. I think each of you keyed in very well on the things that we did. It's hard for me to say we made this decision that was very hard and that is a difficult one to say, oh, we did that well. Because I still do not like that it was a decision that, you know, because of sometimes fact, because of many factors often outside of our control we had to make. But it is part of what the job is, and Commissioner Zer, you might be right that it's oftentimes the worst part of the job or the most difficult, even in the situation where I, and we tonight had, you know, our lives directly threatened, it still almost feels like the hardest part was not that. But in fact, doing this work and trying to find a way to do everything when we have sometimes nothing. So I appreciate the work that each of you did tonight. Tonight, communication is around the board as something. And as we close up this part, it will just lead me into a discussion and a, you know, a brief announcement, our next regular board meeting will be a work session. And in keeping with our work session, we will only be having pledge allegiance and then work session. There will be no other segments to our meeting on April 4th. It will just be all work session. The public, of course, is still welcome to watch either virtually, and I recognize that we have had some technical issues tonight. I have been asked to reiterate the result of the board's vote on insurance. The board adopted option two on a vote of four votes yes and one vote abstain. So just for your awareness, we will be having a work session regarding referendum, but because we have the full time for our work session, we will also be starting to fold in our communication plan work that Commissioner Zer has both, I think brilliantly, but also doggedly continued to push to make us better and continue to, and we will be starting some of that discussion alongside our referendum and rolling those two together because we will need to be communicating about that going forward into the fall. And just making us better at communication in the first place. So we may not have a full formal presentation of the draft plan, but it will start in that conversation. And because we are dedicating our full meeting next time to that, I think we will have time to talk about elements of the communication plan. So one thank you, Commissioner Zer, for your continued work on that and focus. And just for those of you that are still listening or watching, you know, we will just be having work session next time. There will be no additional agenda items. So I think that closes it up for me, and thank you, Commissioner Clements, for leading us in that reflection. At this time, I would hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Come here and adjourn.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board.